Hi, everybody. Get started. It's great to see everybody here. A lot of interest in our meeting tonight. This board meeting of the Board of Education for March 1st, 2022 is called to order. It's Mardi Gras tonight, so we're going to try to get through our agenda and get on to Fat Tuesday. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. The meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services' website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening and welcome to everyone here. Tonight, we are pleased to have our meetings open to the public for in-person attendance. It's great to have everybody here. I'd like to remind everyone that we continue to follow Governor Kate Brown's statewide indoor mask requirement for all indoor public settings, whether vaccinated or not. And please remember to keep aisles clear, and if you're holding a sign, please keep it low so as not to block the view of your community members that might be sitting behind you. We're going to start out by recognizing March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yes, thank you, Chair DePass, and good evening, Directors, and to our audience here, and attendants who are watching from home. Yes, National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is recognized and celebrated during the month of March. This is an acknowledgement that started in 1987 as a way to increase public awareness of the needs and potential of Americans who face developmental disabilities, and to provide the opportunities they need in order to live productive lives and achieve their full potential. Developmental disabilities are defined as impairments in physical, learning, language, or behavior areas. I can't think of a better person to speak to this topic and this recognition than Noel Sisk, our Special Education Family Engagement Specialist, who's joining us virtually this evening to share a few words about the importance of supporting our students with intellectual and developmental disabilities and the families raising them. Noel, thank you for being with us.
Thank you for letting me join. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, good. Thank you so much, Superintendent Guerrero and Board. This lies so close to my heart because I am raising now an adult with an intellectual and developmental disability. She turned 18 this year and attends Grant where I am tonight, so thank you for letting me join virtually. This is so important, I think, as a community, as a school district, and as families and students who have this lived experience that we wrap around them, that we provide the same opportunities that we do to people who don't have disabilities. And we know that the outcomes for the students and the adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities are often less than a whole life. And I think us as a school district, and educators, and the community can really make sure to make that difference, and to break down those barriers, and to break down just the oppression that this group often experiences, especially when it intersects with race and language. Some of the things that we, as a district, I know post-COVID, it's been hard for everyone, students, families, and professionals, and so with so much compassion, we've been trying to still bring these supports to families in a much-needed time. I have a colleague, Paulina Larenas, who also works with me, so we've doubled forces in that over the last year, which has been amazing. And she's bilingual in Spanish, and supporting all district-wide, like myself, but is even better because she can do it in two languages, much smarter than I am. And so the engagement we've been able to do is we have been supporting the transition to kindergarten, both with interpretation, but she's now able to provide that for Spanish-speaking families in their native language. We had a great turnout this year for that, so preparing early childhood special education families in navigating the school-age special education. So we have another one coming up next month. We've started a family and community newsletter, which is now posted to our website, so monthly you're going to be getting updates and resources. We're giving more opportunities for the community, families, and students to give input on their lived experience with Portland Public Schools and the special education services that they have been receiving. And so I think it's next week. My COVID's killing my brain. Next week, we have input sessions that we're doing with a group called Urban Collaborative, who's doing a district-wide review of these special education services, especially in our communication behavior classrooms, our intensive skills classrooms, and those areas that are really serving students with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and how can we make that better? And so we're excited to be able to give that opportunity to the families to tell us what's been wonderful, what has been not so wonderful, and how can we work together to change that. SPAC is back up and running, so we have an advisory committee meeting monthly that is able to -- I have about 15 members currently, and we're still trying to stretch that and diversify that. Part of working with the Community Engagement Department, even though I and Paulina work in community and family engagement, we don't reside in that. You know, we reside in special education. So we're working with them to broaden some of these opportunities for having affinity groups that are specific to disability within schools. As we know, families often feel disenfranchised when they either have to move to a school that's not their neighborhood school, or they have to move to something that is just, you know, not as community-related to their lived experience. So we're trying to change that as well. And then the last thing I was going to bring up is that this year will be the first year our extended school year services for students who qualify for ESY will be done in two-week chunks at the end of the school year, and then in the first part of August, in order to allow students who most likely have these intellectual developmental disabilities who access ESY to also participate in the accelerated learning opportunities that the district is providing, as well as the recovery services that we're doing as a district, so that they won't have to choose this or this, but they'll be able to have the same experience as everyone else. And I just thank you for doing this again. It's so important, and thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you so much, Noel. And please thank your colleague, whose name I did not write down, for your service and for your -- I'm sorry?
Paulina Larenas.
Thank you to the work that you've done for the district on behalf of the kids with developmental disabilities. I really appreciate your work.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
I want to also let you, the audience, know that Director Lowry is attending virtually, so she's here. She's taking care of her mother. So there she is. Thank you, Director Lowry, for being here.
I'll be the voice in the sky again.
Yeah. So thank you, Noel. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6461, Resolution to Recognize March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month?
I like to make motions.
I'm going to give it to Director Lowry, and Director Green is going to have to be a second on this one. It's a first. Is there any board discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
I just wanted to say it's great to hear your update, Noel, and we look forward to hearing about the results of that sort of inventory or assessment that's coming in that you mentioned, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you so much.
And I just want to echo that and say I so appreciate the way that your team is expanding and being really thoughtful about ways we can better serve, especially our families that might not be able to access our systems that we have set up to help them. And so the fact that we're doing Spanish language, and I hope we continue to expand that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We really value that and recognize that there's a much different cultural lived experience when you're talking about disability. And the more aware and we can be at that, the better we're going to serve those families and students. So thank you so much.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm just going to join in because I've sat in many community meetings where Noel was that person who sat next to a parent who maybe was new to PPS or wasn't quite sure how to navigate the system, and I've seen the work you've done. And I know it is symbolic and representative of the work that so many of other PPS staff do to take care of all of our students. And I know we have many of them in our audience today, so I thank you for taking care of our students, not just during March, but all year long. The pandemic has been particularly hard on these students and the families, and so just lots of appreciation for the care that you provide to all of our students. It's much appreciated.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. The Board will now vote on Resolution 6461, Resolution to Recognize March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
Yes, sorry, I was still muted.
Thank you. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6461 is now approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We can clap for that one. That's great. The next is a Resolution to Recognize Classified and Nonrepresented Employees Appreciation Week. You only get a week. March 7th to 11th.
It's not enough.
It's not enough, absolutely. It's March 7th to 11th, 2022. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, Chair. Well, here at PPS, our classified employees, our nonrepresented employees, they perform a wide range of essential work: roles in campus safety, food services, office and clerical work, school maintenance and operations, transportation, academic assistance, para educator services, library and media assistance, computer services. Our staff carry out a wide variety of tasks and important responsibilities at PPS. Many are on the front line of our community interactions. They help make our offices positive and welcoming. They enable our departments to run smoothly. Some work behind the scenes, but all making sure that we provide safe learning environments for our students. I'm going to invite Sharon Reese, our Chief Human Resources Officer, to say a few more words.
Good evening, Chair DePass, Student Representative Weinberg, and Directors. We have a slideshow of some of the images of the many employees that are represented in this group. Next week, PPS will join thousands of other school districts across the country in celebrating and recognizing classified and nonrepresented employees across our public school systems. Tonight, you have the opportunity to consider and vote on Resolution 6462, Recognizing March 7th to 11th, 2022, as Classified and Nonrepresented Employee Appreciation Week. This is an opportunity for all of us: students, families, staff, and you, our school board, to celebrate and appreciate these important colleagues essential to school operations. Because of the dedication of these classified and nonrepresented individuals, PPS is able to get our students to and from school safely each and every day, maintain and upkeep our school buildings so that powerful, rich learning can occur, engage and interact with families, often in languages other than English, provide healthy and nutrition meals -- nutritious, excuse me, meals to every PPS student, provide additional care to students who need extra attention, and so much more. At PPS, whether you are in a classroom every day or clerk in finance, we are all educators. That means that whether you serve meals to students, maintain our school grounds, repair facilities, clean and maintain buildings, translate and interpret messages and meetings, provide clerical support or work directly with students, our people and the roles they have are critical and essential to the school experience, and ensuring every student at PPS can learn in a safe and joyful environment. This annual tradition also includes a celebration of years of service. I am in awe of the dedication and commitment by so many on our team, many who have dedicated their entire life, or a huge chunk of their life, to the children and students of Portland. For example, next week, Duane Hill and Stephen Scott will celebrate forty -- excuse me, 45? It's hard to believe. Forty-five and 40 years respectively as custodians at PPS. This is why one week is not enough. Eight other colleagues will celebrate more than 30 years of service at PPS. From where I stand, these three to four decades of service are not just years on paper. They represent generations of Portlanders touched by their incredible service. We congratulate and thank every PPS employee celebrating five years to 45 years of service to Portland Public Schools. Lastly, to everyone serving our students, thank you. This school year has been a challenging one for every one of us. Our classified and nonrepresented staff, being honored tonight, represent the exceptional level of flexibility and adaptability we've seen these last years. As the head of Human Resources for Portland Public Schools, and as a PPS mom of two students, I simply want to thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of our staff, particularly this week, our classified and nonrepresented employees. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Okay. We just shaved two seconds off the meeting. Thank you.
Just say yes.
And it's easy because your initials are just opposite of each other, so that's very easy. So is there any board discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have Michelle Batten, and she is virtual on her way over now.
Great, thank you. We can. Welcome, Ms. Batten.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to echo what all has been said. I'm Michelle Batten, President of the Portland Federation of School Professionals, PFSP. I wanted to take this opportunity to send out a rousing thank you to the 1,375 members represented by PFSP. This has been a very tough year, as was stated, as we've transitioned back to in-person learning and working. Our classification members, our classified members, represent over 70 job classifications at all buildings. We are everywhere: in the classroom, special education, in libraries, transportation, campus safety, translating for our students and families, and all the behind-the-scenes support of our students and communities. Some fun facts about PFSP members: our oldest member is 86, our youngest member is 19. Our two longest-tenured members have been here 44 years. Additionally, we are the most diverse of the bargaining groups. Our members are 64% white, 13% Latino, 10% Black, 8% Asian, 1% American Indian, and 4% who, like myself, identify as multiracial. We are a lively group, bringing with us our rich heritages and our passion for the students we support. I thank the school board for recognizing classified employees. Tonight, it is a pleasure and an honor to represent these 1,375 amazing employees. Thank you.
Thank you. The Board will now vote on Resolution 6462, Resolution to Recognize Classified and Nonrepresented Employee Appreciation Week, March 7th through the 11th, 2022. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And then are there any abstentions? Resolution 6462 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Thank you. The Board will now vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull at this time for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any items you'd like to -- I'm sorry. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Yes. Resolution 6460 was revised and posted prior to the meeting, and Resolution 6464 was removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Director Lowry. Okay, so do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to pull Resolution 6452.
6452. It's Resolution 6452 to authorize off-campus activities, and so we'll pull that resolution off for the discussion at the end of the meeting. Is that correct? For a process perspective, can we vote on the consent agenda?
As amended.
As amended, with 6460 revised, 6464 removed, and 6452 pulled for discussion at the end of the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion. I think we can.
I was just going to ask if I had a motion and a second to adopt the amended consent agenda.
You do. Have a motion.
Second.
Oops. HG first. Director Green moves. Director Holland seconds the adoption of the consent agenda as amended. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? And Ms. Bradshaw, do we have public comment?
No.
Okay. The Board will now vote on Resolutions 6462 through 6459 -- I'm sorry, 6460.
6452 was pulled, so it's 6453 through 6460.
Six -- okay. 6453 through 6460. Thank you for the clarification. The Board will now vote on Resolutions 6453 through 6460. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda, as amended, is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Great. We now turn to student and public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to review the guidelines for public comment. First, the Board thanks you for taking the time to attend the meeting and providing your comments. Public input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, your reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen, and to that end, I'd ask each of us to give our full attention to the people in front of us. Our Board Office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony, and we request that any complaints about individual employees please be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items that you'd like to provide to the Board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. That's publiccomment@pps.net. Publiccomment@pps.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment, you clearly state your name and spell your last name. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes, we have both. Grace Grady.
Ms. Grady is in person?
It's supposed to be.
Ms. Grady?
Ruby Schull.
Welcome. You'll want to state your first name and spell your last name, and you each have three minutes. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Ruby Waas-Schull. Waas-Schull is spelled W-A-A-S, no hyphen, S-H-U-L-L.
Hello, my name is Sienna, and my last name is spelled L-O-P-E-Z. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We are sixth graders at Kellogg Middle School. We used to go to Bridger Elementary. We're here today to speak to you about why Spanish DLI should stay at Kellogg.
Let me tell you why I think the SDLI program should stay at Kellogg, because this is our neighborhood and our community, and we have a right to stay at Kellogg like everyone else. By removing the Spanish immersion, you're stripping away the diversity and separating communities that formed at Kellogg. It's not just about numbers. Our struggles matter too. My dad came here from Mexico, and because there wasn't anything like the SDLI program, he struggled through most of his time in school. The program is meant to be inclusive, and it's doing a good job of that. However, by removing the SDLI program, it's doing exact opposite, by making us feel excluded and unwanted. It feels like it's taking a step backwards in our community. If you truly care about equity and inclusion, please consider keeping Spanish immersion at Kellogg. It's what's best for the SDLI program, and its students and families, and keeping Kellogg strong. Thank you.
We have a community at Kellogg of which the Spanish DLI is very important. Kellogg was created with Spanish in mind. For example, we have a Spanish-speaking secretary, and the Spanish DLI teachers are a huge part of the Kellogg team. These teachers and administration work together to support our Spanish DLI students. Breaking up this community just a year after it was formed could be detrimental to the Spanish DLI students. For a vulnerable immigrant population, that disruption is especially harmful. Taking away this incredible new school and growing community from the students that PPS says it's most important to protect would be harmful and hurtful. So I ask you, the Board members, to imagine how it would feel after the excitement and success of Kellogg to have that all taken away.
Thank you for your comments.
Charlie Lupro.
Hi, my name is Charlie Lupro, L-U-P-R-O. I am a seventh grader at Roseway Heights Middle School. I don't want to be here. I don't like public speaking. I feel embarrassed and overwhelmed. My mom asked me if I was interested in speaking here, thinking there was no way I would ever agree. But I said yes because this feels very important to me. I am here because teachers and students desperately need help, and they are not getting what they need. For many of my peers, in-person school has been chaotic and overwhelming. I've had forced exposure to bad situations, and I've been right up front to verbal and physical violence: punching, dragging, scratching, teachers trying to stop it, yelling, kids filming, everyone crowding around. I've seen teachers put their bodies between students attacking each other. I've seen teachers get hit. Everyone has their own problems and needs, including administration, and there are not enough people to help. Administration can't get around to help all the teachers, and teachers can't get around to help all the students. Sometimes, there aren't enough subs, and people like librarians and guidance counselors have to step in. There just isn't enough support. There are not enough people. I've loved a lot of my teachers through all of my schooling experience. So much that I wanted to be a teacher throughout elementary school. But now, knowing what teachers go through, I don't want to be a teacher anymore. I don't want to have to pull kids off of each other in a fight and then just move on to the next period. I don't want to have to juggle so much all the time and not get the support and help I need. I don't want to have a student who I care for and who needs my help but not have the resources and time to support them in the way they deserve. Teachers are already dealing with a lot, and we keep piling more and more on their shoulders. I would be struggling more if I didn't have the great teachers I've had to support me. I love my teachers. Please help them. Please listen to them. They're the ones who know what they need and what students need. Thank you for listening.
We have Ben Stevenson, and they are remote on their way over now. We have Ben Stevenson, and they are remote on their way over now.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Awesome, thank you. My name is Ben Stevenson. I use human pronouns, S-T-E-V-E-N-S-O-N. I am here as an 11th grader at Cleveland High School and a member of the Sunrise Movement PDx. I am here because PPS students are demanding strong climate action, and our voices must be heard. This is why thousands of students walked out this fall to demand strong climate action. And this is why the board must pass a strong climate crisis response policy with no cuts and no concessions. I'd like to echo the sentiments of the letter that Sunrise sent to you all, members of the board, and follow through on this and hold you to your desire for climate action. I'm going to start off by talking about some principles from Sunrise, a movement which I've lived, a movement which I've lived by, and thousands of youth around uphold these principles. And I believe that if we can do that, you can as well. The first is, we shine bright. In my experience with political activism and working with government, it's easy to have a negative story. And this is the case with the Climate Crisis Response Policy as well. You can see the headline, "PPS Has Failed Its Students By Letting Their Futures Burn." But this is also a great positive opportunity, and this is what I want to focus on tonight. This is an opportunity for PPS to shine bright as a national leader in taking climate action and protecting and standing up for the safety and concerns of students. And LA also had a recent climate policy that they passed, and we can follow in those footsteps as well. And again, it's an opportunity to stand up for students and listen to community, especially in a time when there's a lot of division among the district and other issues that the district is facing. Another one of the principles that I have been living by is, we take initiative. Just the other day, the United Nations came out with a report calling for transformational change to address the climate crisis, and nothing less. And PPS has the power to do this transformational change, to make a difference. We are the largest, you all are the largest landowner in the city, have some of the biggest kitchens, and your first priority must be student safety. In a world defined by the climate crisis, this means uplifting the needs of students whose safety is jeopardized by climate inaction and eliminating your carbon footprint. Climate crisis is only going to get solved by everybody doing what they can. And passing a strong climate crisis response policy is what PPS needs to do to stand up for the needs and desires of students. And while some may say that this is difficult, we faced adversity before with the COVID-19 pandemic, and the alternative inaction on the climate crisis is even worse. While passing the Climate Crisis Response Policy is only a first step for climate action, and we must continue to hold each other accountable, I strongly urge the PPS school board to enact this policy to stand up for students, their safety, and listen to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Ada Crandall.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Ada Crandall. I'm C-R-A-N-D-A-L-L. I am a sophomore at Grant High School. I'm here tonight to ask that you vote yes on the Climate Crisis Response Policy. Over the years, I have not seen climate justice reflected in this district. Many of our schools do not have the resources to teach about or act on sustainable practices. Student advocacy efforts have often been shut down or had to work around PPS as an obstacle rather than an ally. I am optimistic that this policy is the first step towards changing that, towards true action and collaboration. However, I worry that it could fall into the same pattern as past climate justice initiatives, where promises are made yet action falls short. The support for this policy is loud and clear. But I am here because I don't want a victorious yes vote on a random Tuesday night rainy school board meeting to be the last that we hear of this.
We don't either.
At the end of the day, it doesn't matter what policy is written in past. It matters that you follow through. True climate justice is not about empty words. It's about action. Passing this policy is a commitment to that action, to your students, and to the future. We have less than eight years to stop the climate crisis. That number gets thrown around a lot, but I don't think it often sinks in. By the time I am 23 years old, we may have passed the threshold that leaves this planet uninhabitable for future generations. A current first grader in PPS will have barely finished middle school. A child born today will have their climate fate sealed at age eight. Some people call me a pessimist when it comes to the climate crisis. They say I'm being too negative. But I think that I'm just seeing what's there, and I need you to see it too. I'm not, I'm not saying that stopping climate change is an impossible task. I'm saying, I'm not saying that there's no solution. I know you're trying, I see that, and I appreciate it, I really do. But I need you to understand that the Climate Crisis Response Policy is only the beginning. Passing it is the first step, but it is certainly not the last. There are a lot of people here tonight watching this moment, remembering this moment. We will do everything in our power to hold you accountable to your vote tonight. But ultimately, accountability is something that has to be taken. It can't just be put upon you. You can choose to take accountability. You can choose to fight for us. You can choose to vote yes and then act. We are counting on you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Ella Higgs virtually.
Hi, Ella will be here. Just a moment.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, my name is Ella Higgs, H-I-G-G-S. And I'm a junior.
Ella, we can't see your face. We can only see the lower part of your body.
Okay.
So I don't know where your ca- It looks like Ms. Higgs is frozen. Is there any way to contact her or?
Yes, I'll call the next person.
Dial back in?
And then reach out.
Okay.
We have, Grace Grady is here. So call Grace Grady.
Oh, Grace, Grace? Oh, hi. Welcome. Yeah, come on, come on down. Just state your first name and spell your last name, and then we'll, you've got three minutes to testify. Thank you.
My name is Grace Gaddy. Last name, G-A-D-D-Y. Ready to go?
We're ready, we're ready to listen to you. Yes, thank you, Grace.
Thank you. Chair to pass, Vice Chair Scott, and members of the Portland Public Schools Board. My name is Grace Gaddy. I'm a junior at McDaniel High School. I've attended Portland Public Schools for over 12 years. We, my climate justice classmates, teacher, myself, and over 200 McDaniel students and staff are here, whether in person or in spirit, before you today to urge you to vote in support of the bold and necessary Climate Crisis Response Policy. While emissions reduction and sustainable infrastructure are important, today I am more interested in the Pillar Three objective, providing effective environmental and sustainability education. This is because, in all honesty, in 2050, most kids won't care if their schools have phased-out gas-fired equipment. They shouldn't have to. By signing on to this policy, PPS will be committing to change for the long haul, a worthy commitment, so that students in the near and far future won't see their low-carbon schools and deep-paved schoolyards as extraordinary but just ordinary. Climate justice and equity education is just as much the keystone to a livable future as reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And lucky for us, young people are ready and willing to learn. I recently sat in on an eco club meeting of sixth graders from Roseway Heights Middle School, a feeder school into McDaniel. I'm surprised and inspired by the students' enthusiasm, which was evident in their excitement to tell me everything about their school's garden. I watched as they quieted for their teacher to translate climate justice, indigenous food sovereignty, and sustainability into language which they could understand, absorbing every new word. Though I'm a young person myself, it gives me hope to see elementary and middle school students who light up at the proposition to have class outside or make protest signs. It should be all of ours joy and responsibility to nurture this booming curiosity in youth of all ages and backgrounds. I believe that this policy has the potential to catalyze historic change in this city we love, equip every PPS student with the tools to be a climate leader, and allow us to play our part in a global just transition. Knowing this, we, the youth, ask the school board, will you let this opportunity pass you by? Thank you for your time and consideration. I yield my time.
Thank you.
It looked like Ella had connected to video. Are you there? Would you like to try now, Ella?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, Ella.
Here we go. Thank you. Hi, my name is Ella Higgs, H-I-G-G-S, and I'm a student at Rosebelt High School. And my friends and classmates and I care so much about climate change, and we have a video to share with you all. One second.
For some reason, we're not hearing the music. I'm wondering if we can restart.
Let me mute myself and see if that's better. Okay, instead of that, I'm just going to share a few things that the student said while this video is going.
Can I just read a few things?
It's a narrated, we're discussing, it's a narrated video that has music background that's quite pleasant, so. We had a suggestion that make sure the sound is shared with the screen sharing. We're all learning together.
Some quotes are, "Let, let PPS be a model for the world on how reduce, reducing the impacts of climate change." And I wonder what part of the policy is important to you? "Climate change is impacting my health as well as those around me. We need to start acting now." "How can PPS care about our education and not our planet? How can we have an education if we don't even have a livable planet? Where are all the islands going? Let's have cafeterias serve more local, plant-based, seasonal ingredients instead of ingredients shipped from faraway places. Let's use more environmentally friendly companies for school foods. We should be able to recycle in every school and use bulk serving instead of all the plastic waste from individually wrapped foods. We, can't we be done with the single-use plastics already? At the very least, let's take some first steps together. I'm excited to see PPS transition its vehicle fleet to electric and low-emissions vehicles. Let's construct energy-efficient, high-performing buildings that are safer and more resistant to the impacts of climate change. My schoolmate Kate says, 'Environmental issues affect me personally because I work in the fishing industry and the global warming affects the fish populations. We need more accountability. We're ready for a carbon-neutral school system. The best thing for PPS students is more accountability on climate change.'" Like Gratitunberg said, "The climate crisis has already been solved. All we have to do now is wake up and change. Let's model the solutions that are being taught and practice what we preach. This is our home. We are in a crisis. We stand for Earth. The future is now. We need to take the steps to change. We need you to have our backs for real."
Thank you, Ella.
Rahi Reddy.
We live our community values, so we all come up together.
Excellent.
Thank you. Good evening, PPS board members. My name is Rahi Reddy, R-E-D-D-Y, and I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Bridger in the dual-language immersion. I'm here to speak about SEGC and ask you to consider our voices and perspectives as you deliberate in March. Behind me, you're going to see real families, real parents, and kids that will be impacted by your decisions. So we have just a few things we want to share with you as kind of lenses for you to consider as you are approaching these different scenarios. The first thing is, do not tear apart a program and a community that is built to close the achievement gap for Latinx and BIPOC students in Southeast Kellogg. Our communities have shared time and time again that dismantling and relocating the Spanish-language, community-centered program at Kellogg and displacing so many BIPOC families will be devastating for these families and strike a blow to a community that's there for their success and to close the gap. And reject these ideas that this is a special interest program. The program at Kellogg also helps Latinx students who are in Marysville and other, other schools that feed into it with culturally specific and culturally competent staff to support them. Immigrant communities have been displaced and dislocated. You know that in Southeast. And it's been our dual-language programs and the staffing and cultural competency that has actually helped families through all of it. You made a commitment to boost Black and Latino student achievement. And so we ask, build on the success of Kellogg. Don't harm it. Help it grow and thrive. The second piece is reject efforts to pit one BIPOC community against another. Please, please. You may hear, I'm sorry, I want to keep the time. Thank you, guys. You may hear from some in the SEGC that the only way to get their idea of a perfect number on enrollment will matter on the outcomes you're trying to achieve at the end of the day. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Jane Comalt?
My name is Jane Comalt, C-O-M-E-A-U-L-T. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm here on behalf of the Eco School Network, a local nonprofit that serves 77 local schools. Amy Higgs, the executive director, and I have worked with Mike Rosen and the Climate Justice Committee and PPS Board and staff on this climate crisis response, climate justice, and sustainable practices policy since the beginning. I'm here with the full support of our network and urge the school board to vote yes to the draft tonight. For 13 years, parent volunteers and students in Eco School Network have been launching projects in their schools that touch on many of the goals of this policy. Through student green teams and climate justice clubs, they've been creating school gardens and habitats, walk-and-bike programs, and reducing cafeteria waste. And while the district has generally been supportive, the work had to be done school by school, and projects face so many barriers. PPS systems were not set up with carbon reduction in mind, and it's past time for these systems to change. Implementation won't be easy, of course, and staff capacity required may exceed what's available. We hope you'll call on community partners, such as the Eco School Network and others, to help get it done. I hope that every parent, teacher, staff, student, and board member who shaped this policy all feel some sense of ownership for this and carry forward with that, a willingness to roll up our sleeves and work together to make this policy successful. This is extremely important and urgent work. On Monday, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released a report telling us that the dangers of climate change are mounting so rapidly that they could soon overwhelm the ability of both nature and humanity to adapt unless greenhouse gas emissions are quickly reduced. It also reinforced what we already know but have failed to adequately address about the human impact, that the effects of climate change will continue to be felt by those who are both least responsible and have the fewest resources to respond to it. With this policy, PPS can feel proud of doing its part to fight climate change and promote climate justice. This is a momentous occasion worth celebrating. When we started working on the policy, we researched similar efforts from around the country and believed that this draft policy is one of the boldest and most comprehensive climate response policies of any school district in the U.S. At the December 14th board meeting, a PPS student, Ada Crandall, giving testimony asked the board, "Is climate justice something that you value and something that you want to take action on?" And each of you raised your hands to say yes. This is an opportunity to demonstrate your leadership by voting yes to adopt the draft climate crisis response, climate justice, and sustainable practices policy tonight. Thank you.
Angela Bonilla?
Hello. My name is Angela Bonilla, B-O-N-I-L-L-A. I am an educator at Scott School in Northeast Portland, and I've worked for PPS for about eight years. I'm also the president-elect of PAT. Thanks. I'm here before you today to share my concerns around the district's proposed staffing cuts and to discuss the opportunity we have to create great public schools for everyone. I understand that saying there's money does not make it so, as some board members have tweeted out. However, 20-page slideshow saying there isn't money doesn't make it so either. We have learned that PPS will receive $507.6 million from the state school fund next year. That's a $2.5 million increase from this year. I wonder, when was the last time any of our district leadership or our school board was at Roseway Heights, or George Middle School, or Chavez K8, or Roosevelt High School? Or Tubman? What is the last time they were there to be on walkie, responding to the dozens of calls that they get daily for support for students struggling to be safe? We need support. We need investment. Instead of telling us that we need to do more with less, we need our school board to be willing to question district leadership's perception of what our schools need and listen to the educators and staff on the ground. We are at a crucial point in our funding timeline. We can reverse course now and stop students and families from enduring ballooning class sizes. Our union and the folks on the ground delivering services are saying we need to keep our schools staffed at current levels. We can no longer wait for folks to decide that our students and families are worth financially investing in. That's the urgency I want you to understand. I know it feels uncertain or like this might not be the right time to make such an investment. But if we don't stand up for our families when we have an opportunity to stay the course and have better class sizes next year, when will there be a better time? After the next pandemic, the next homelessness crisis, the next economic downturn? Enough is enough. We can build something better, something great, but we need your help. We need the district to have the courage to join teachers and families in saying, together, we will do what's best for our kids, for our families, for our staff, no matter how much it costs, no matter how long it takes, because that is our duty as a public school system, because that is what is right, because that is what our students deserve. And so as I ran for president of PAT, I ran on the idea that united we can and united we will. So united, we can create schools where students and families truly feel they belong. And united, we can create community schools that support students during tragedies and cheer them on through their triumphs. United, we can create great public schools for everyone, and united, we will. The question is, are you ready to join us in that vision? Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joanne Shepherd. S-H-E-P-A-R-D. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I teach first grade at Whitman Elementary, a Title I school in Southeast Portland. And I've come before you tonight with a question. Why should I stay at PPS? Over the past few months, I've been actively recruited by neighboring public school districts. I'm a highly educated, multilingual, queer Black woman. I assume, based on the values of this body and this district, that y'all hope to retain me. How does this FTE proposal, this budget, contribute to or detract from my retainment here? Let's back up. I started in PPS as a kindergarten assistant six years ago, and I have stayed at the same Title I school, Whitman, for six years. I've seen a lot of upper-echelon administrative turnover, and every year, it seems the suits get nicer. But Whitman has only continued to receive less resources, cut and cut and cut. In comparison from my first year in 2016 to next year, we will be cut four classroom teachers, four educational assistants, two paraeducators, .5 sped, .5 ELL, .4 PE, and .5 art. Note that I am talking about the cuts overall for the past six years, not just from this year to next. I encourage this body to look at the pattern of resource allocation for Title I schools and not just the year-to-year change. And despite our Title I status, we are one of the schools that is facing cuts. In all honesty, it feels like either you don't know how bad things are or you don't care. But how could you know? You've only been here a couple of years. It is demoralizing for this body to say that the budget is allocated appropriately when the top tiers of administration receive bonuses and raises and those who provide direct student services face cuts. If a budget, if a budget is a moral document, why should I stay here? I reread the PPS Vision and Graduate Portrait, which I actually really like, by the way. Specifically, of the 10 PPS core values, I want to highlight how this current staffing proposal does not align with the following four values. One, students at the center. How does this proposal put students at the center? Two, honesty and integrity. How is any of this process transparent? How can I trust the district that has continued to lie, whether intentional or unintentional? Three, relationships. How does this proposal build trust? And how does this enable educators to build relationships? Four, partnerships and collaboration. And I'll quote, "We believe that together, we..." Oh, real quick. "We believe that together, we know and can achieve a great deal, and that by leveraging the collective actions of a group of committed stakeholders, we can achieve our vision." So why are you not leveraging this collective action of these stakeholders? In closing, I'll just say, I am staying. But I'm staying because I believe we can leverage this collective action to achieve our shared vision. I'm staying. Will you?
Maya Von Gelder?
I was prepared to speak tonight when given a spot, but found out that a friend, Ginger Huzar, didn't make it off the waitlist, so I'd like to read her testimony and send mine in in writing instead. This is Ginger. Last name spelled H-U-I-Z-A-R. Oh, should I spell my last name to Maya Von Gelder?
Are you testifying for yourself?
I'm reading her because they wouldn't let me get my spot up to her.
They said I couldn't speak tonight.
Thank you.
Spell my last name or no? Doesn't matter.
Yes, please.
Okay. Maya Von Gelder, lowercase V-O-N capital G-E-L-D-E-R-N. And my pronouns are she/her/hers.
Can we restart her time so that it doesn't interfere?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we restart? Thank you, Director Green.
Ginger is a special education learning center teacher at George Middle School and mom of Grants District Student Council Rep. Dani Cage. In her words, "I'm here tonight to address the proposed staffing cuts. Middle schools and PPS have struggled more than others to maintain safe learning environments and staffing. Our middle-school-aged children are in one of the most formative and developmentally chaotic stages of life. Post-pandemic, we are seeing higher rates of mental health crisis, including suicidal ideation, self-harm, deprivation, isolation, and anxiety. We are seeing bullying in person and social media bullying, sexual harassment and assaults, and increased physical violence. All of this leads to lower school success, higher mental, emotional, and behavioral health needs, and increased school-community needs. As a special education teacher in a Title I school, I... Sorry. Have had to address each of these issues this year without invested district support or resources, teaching materials, or training. I share this because it is a comfortable seat to have at the table that allows each of you as PPS leadership the power to decide who gets cut from our buildings next year. You cannot understand what we put into teaching that has nothing to do with meeting grade-level academic outcomes, but everything to do with how our kids feel when they enter our schools. And that makes a difference in their overall educational experience. You are not the person who gets punched, who provides a safe space to the child needing respite, who pulls a screaming child off another and hugs their shaking body as they make death threats. Death threats, sorry, hard words to say. Who leads whole-class interventions after hate speech or racism has been used in a room or who talks our kids down off ledges each day. We are only numbers to you, but we are so much more than numbers. The work we do in our schools, especially for our communities who are more impacted, is not measurable by life standardized testing or a per-pupil funding model. Students who are English-language learners are not counted as a whole student in your staff funding model, resulting in ELL staffing cuts and services in many schools directly based upon outdated ELPA test data. This is racist. Every child deserves to be counted as a whole student in your funding model despite what language they speak or how well they speak it. Teachers should not be penalized because PPS has already made poor money-management decisions, such as millions spent on cameras, which went unused last spring. In the words of Director Green, "It's on the record." There is projected to be an increase in per-pupil funding for the state school fund, an increase in funding from student investment account, providing PPS with $38 million for next school year, continued funding from the arts tax, and teacher levy providing PPS with $100 million, and $100 million in ESSR federal relief fund, funding which has to be used by 2024. As session comes to a close, OEA believes that the legislature is poised to make over $420 million in new investments in public education. Next year...
Ms. Von Gelder?
I'm almost done. She is almost done.
I just wanted to remind you, thank you, that the timer went off.
Next year is not the year to cut staff. With this additional funding, this is the year to provide what we have systematically -- sorry, systemically denied these students. As stated by the Student Success Act, "At the heart of the SSA is a commitment to improving access and opportunities for students who have been historically underserved in the educational system. This cannot be done by cutting teachers."
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes who we have signed up for public comment.
Did you say that concludes public comment? Thank you all for coming. I know there's, you could be home eating dinner or a multitude of other things that are just as important as being here, so I thank you for your comments and your concerns. Feel free to connect with our senior board manager if you have additional materials or anything specifically you'd like to follow up with. We'll now hear comments from the Portland Association of Teachers. Our agreement with the Portland Association of Teachers provides time on the agenda if they request it. It's not timed, and I'd like to welcome PAT President Elizabeth Teal.
Hello. I have multiple devices to set up here to be able to share a couple slides. I'm looking for Roseanne's eye.
I see Roseanne right over to your, yes, your left.
So pardon me as I get myself logged in again.
such as millions spent on cameras, which went unused last spring. In the words of Director Green, "It's on the record." There is projected to be an increase in per-pupil funding for the state school fund, an increase in funding from student investment account, providing PPS with $38 million for next school year, continued funding from the arts tax, and teacher levy providing PPS with $100 million, and $100 million in ESSR federal relief fund, funding which has to be used by 2024. A session comes to a close. OEA believes that the legislature is poised to make over $420 million in new investments in public education.
Ms. Von Gelder?
I'm almost done.
Okay, I just wanted to remind you, thank you, that the timer went off.
Next year is not the year to cut staff. With this additional funding, this is the year to provide what we have systematically, sorry, systemically denied these students. As stated by the Student Success Act, "At the heart of the SSA is a commitment to improving access and opportunities for students who have been historically underserved in the educational system." This cannot be done by cutting teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes who we have signed up for public comment.
Did you say that concludes public comment? Thank you all for coming. I know there's, you could be home eating dinner or a multitude of other things that are just as important as being here. So I thank you for your comments and your concerns. Feel free to connect with our senior board manager if you have additional materials or anything specifically you'd like to follow up with. We'll now hear comments from the Portland Association of Teachers. Our agreement with the Portland Association of Teachers provides time on the agenda if they request it. It's not timed, and I'd like to welcome PAT President Elizabeth Teal.
Hello. I, I have multiple devices to set up here to be able to share a couple of slides. I'm looking for Roseanne's eye.
I see Roseanne right over to your, yes, your left.
So pardon me as I get myself logged in again. And then... Roseanne, I don't seem to have the ability to... Oh, wait, hold on, maybe I do. To share my screen. Thanks, guys. I just have to find the right screen to share. There we go. Okay. I think I got it. Okay, thanks, guys. All right, hello. Now, one more device to get ready. Sorry about that, guys. Here we go. Hi, everybody. Hello, Chair DePass, Superintendent Guerrero, Student Rep Weinberg, and all the members of the board. Thank you for allowing me again to address you this evening. Last week, I came before you to talk about proposed staffing cuts, which will reduce the number of teaching positions in PPS and increase class sizes across the district. I asked you to take a different path. I'm here today because while PPS has proceeded with cuts, there is still time to change course and make next year a better year. And we have additional information that now makes that pathway even clearer. At the board meeting last week, PPS staff presented a thorough presentation on district funding. Thank you very much for the, for providing that information in this public forum. Having had time to review the presentation, I want to continue the conversation tonight. First, some good news, and it is posted on this slide. Since I spoke to you last, Oregon did publish its state fund estimates from next year. They came out on Thursday. The outcome is good news for PPS. PPS presented last week an anticipated enrollment loss of 3,500, or 8%. That's a number that's been sent to the community and referenced several times, including in the presentation on Tuesday. But the weighted enrollment change in PPS enrollment is just 3.5%. At the same time, weighted per-pupil funding is going up. This means that PPS now has assurance that we will be receiving slightly more money from the state next year than this year overall, not less, and significantly more funding for each student. And I want you to note that the way the weighted funding works is some students count as one and some students count as more than one because of increased identified need by the state. When PPS's weight goes up, that means we're serving more students with more identified need, and the state's intention is for us to spend more on them. This puts PPS in a much better position than when you projected that 8% decline in enrollment, and which could create an 8% drop in funding. It's not. This is, of course, in addition to the teacher levy dollars, which are stable despite a drop in enrollment, and the Student Success Act, Student Investment Account money, which is stable despite lower enrollment, and the ESAR funds, which must be invested in our students over the next two years. I believe there's about $70 million left to spend from those funds. This is really positive news, and it reinforces the conclusion that there is not a funding shortfall that requires us to cut teachers and raise class sizes. Rather, we can and we must give each of our students more. Now I have a few questions, or a question about one of the slides you presented yesterday. So as of last week, PPS presented projections that PPS is planning to spend an additional $48 million next year above this year's spending. This is the slide from last week. So that increase in projected spending was already the plan, even with the plan to have an 8% cut in enrollment that was presented. So the good news is I think we're on the same page that we do have additional resources to invest in our students. It's about a 7% increase in spending, according to this slide. My question is, what is the plan for that additional spending? Why are we cutting teachers while increasing our spending by $48 million? I'm particularly interested in knowing what cuts from central office are planned. Cuts to direct services to students should be the last resort. And just about every single one of you told us that when we interviewed you and you were as a, as a, as a union, when you were running for your position, that if you had to make budget cuts, that funding, taking funds away from classrooms would be the last resort. We are not facing a budget crisis. We do not have a funding shortfall, and yet we're talking about cutting supports from students. So finally, I want to talk about enrollment projections for last year. Last week, PPS presented a chart showing the historical and projected enrollment in our schools. During the distance learning, during distance learning, we lost students. And the beginning of the green line up there shows that. Last year, the district presented those students would come back. That's the little, the V that starts with the blue line. Then, Delta hit, and we started the school year at the height of the most deadly surge in COVID-19, while children under 12 were still unable to be vaccinated. Many families remained on a waitlist for the online learning academy for months. Some families chose to keep their student at home or to enroll in online programs outside the district. Well, I, I believe and hope that next year is going to be a better year and that we're not going to be facing anything like the Delta surge. But it appears that PPS is no longer anticipating that any of those students will ever come back. So the orange line represents PPS's current projection. And there, and it says in the circle at the bottom, there's no more, there's no more anticipation of a bump. Other parents and community members I talked to know families who are planning to come back next school year, and we need to be ready for them. In the fortunate and likely event that those families do choose to come back to PPS, we have not planned for that. A school that we are staffing now to have 31 in each first-grade class may actually end up with 33 or 34. We could try to add positions in the fall to account for those students coming back, but it is unlikely we'll be able to fill them as teachers will have already accepted jobs. There's a better way. We can make this a school district that families want to come back to and that families want to stay in. We do that by investing in our students, by lowering our class sizes so students can get the attention and support they need every day. So now I have some more good news. I was told late last week that PPS has lowered the maximum middle school class size from 35 to 33 in Title I middle schools and 34 in other schools. I'm told that this added back 12 teaching positions. So I want to thank you. That's a good start. Let's do more. We are still cutting 31.5 positions for middle school. Instead of reducing the number of educators, could we lower middle school class sizes to no higher than 32? How about no higher than 30 in our Title I middle schools like Harriet Tubman, Lane, Roseway Heights, Oakley Green, and George? Let's keep going. PPS is currently eliminating 65 elementary teacher positions. Instead, we could utilize those positions to bring class sizes down, starting with our CSI schools. Instead of fourth grade and fifth grade, up to 32 students in CSI schools like Rigler and Sitten, why not keep those class sizes under 30? Our Title I schools, like James John and Harrison Park, have kindergarten and first grade, kindergarten and first-grade classes up to 28. How about we allocate some of those 65 positions so that we can cap them at 26? If there is still FTE left after that, we could keep going and invest in smaller class sizes in all our schools. We still have the opportunity to make next year a better year. The resources are available. The need is undeniable, and the teachers are here wanting to stay in our school communities. Unassignments are already becoming official. For many, they've already been told that they are unassigned, but teachers haven't left yet. You can still direct the district to improve the staffing ratios and make next year a better year for the students we have and the students we hope to get back. Thank you again for listening, for taking the time and initiative to put us on a better path while we still have a chance. I know we all care about our school district, and we're asking for you to take action to make sure next year is better. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Chair DePass, can I make a quick comment? This is to the superintendent. Thank you for everyone's testimony tonight. Thank you, Ms. Teal, for that testimony as well. I'd like to just, we have a budget session coming up next week, and I would just like to ask the superintendent, as we go into that, and his staff, to help, you know, prepare some information. I think that this conversation is so important that we need to have as a, as a board and as a district. It already has started, and I think that's, that's where we are right now. I'm just going to be really blunt. I'm concerned by a lot of the misinformation that I'm receiving in emails, but I don't want to blame the people sending that because I think it's important for us to make sure that we're being very clear about the assumptions that we're using. And I think it's really important that we start with the same assumptions. We're not going to end up at the same place, even with the same assumptions. But if we don't start with the same assumptions, we're never going to get to a community-oriented or collaborative solution. So, you know, I, I hear tonight talking about the increase from the state school fund of $2.5 million. I have no reason to question that number. I'm assuming that's accurate. I think the other side of that equation we need to talk about are the, are the cost increases as well. And, you know, I've, I've done public budgets a long time, and I hate to sort of make that, that analogy between public budgets and personal budgets, but sometimes it is helpful. And I think, you know, one way to think about, you know, the costs and the revenues are that if, if your, you know, if your income goes up in a year from $50,000 to $55,000, you know, you have $5,000 more. If your rent goes up in, in that same year by $10,000, have you made more money? You haven't, right? And you're behind as an individual. The question for us, and, and again, I don't want to say where we are, but I think the question that I'd like to ask, you know, staff to talk about next week is, when we talk about these increases in, in, in funding, which I think are real, what are the increases in costs? And where are those coming from? And, and is that something we have some control over? I heard talk about sort of the resource allocation for Title I schools in particular. I think that's a really important issue to look at. My understanding is that we have invested significantly more per pupil in Title I schools than we have in others, and that's been part of the district's efforts over the last few years around racial equity. And so I think making sure we're really clear about that, and, and whether there's more we can or should be doing, I think is going to be really important. I think the ESAR funding was raised, and, and I know there was a slide from staff last week about how that money is going to be spent, or that we were planning to spend that $70 million over the next two years. I think being very specific with the community, where are those dollars going, will be really important to the conversation. And then finally, just the overall question of where is, you know, where, where is that increase? You know, we've got the increase in dollars, and, and I think, Ms. Teal, you talked about, I think it was $48 million, you know, and, and let's be really clear about where that's going. Because, again, my understanding as a board member is that those resources are going primarily towards staff, towards, towards schools, towards, towards, you know, the type of improvements. But, but let me be clear, we need to show that to you. And that's what I want to make sure as a district that we're able to do. And so I would just ask, as we go into that budget session next week, I think, starting with those assumptions, will then allow us to have the really important conversation about what's that balance between spending our one-time resources, our ongoing resources, and, and what do we do in this current budget year? And how does that filter into future budget years as well? Because that's an important question that as a board, we can't just look at '22, '23. We have to look at what happens in '23, '24, '24, '25, and beyond.
So as, as long as we're talking about the, the budget session, I also think we need to understand, because what I don't feel like I have is the full picture of what's happening. You know, I, I'm hearing from a lot of areas from the district about, from schools, communities, about cuts and what that means and, and what staffing ratio it is based on. And I think for us to have integrity in our budgeting process, we need to just lay that all out because if we're, if we're going to add or subtract or have a particular staffing ratio, I think what would benefit the whole community is being able to understand, sort of back to your, like, starting with the whole set of assumptions. So we know what the assumptions are. What are the staffing ratios? What are the, the cuts that are rolling out across schools so that we can actually look at them as a whole versus responding just to a particular community or an, maybe an anecdote? But without all of that, it's hard to see the full picture. It's from my perspective.
I'd also like to advocate, I think last week when we were here, we were, as a means of diffusing the tensions somewhat, we said that there would be a, a work session that we could kind of get, get the more full picture of the budget. And I would, I would advocate for that as well.
Since we're talking, I think the thing that I would like to see, and I believe I brought this up to part of the team earlier today as well, is that if we're going to make a, a decision one way or another, because I've been under the impression that we weren't going to have cuts, and now I'm starting to hear that there are going to be cuts. And I've been under the impression that the, that, that what we're doing is about making things better for, for the students that are involved and that we want to make this the, a, a great school year for the, for the students involved. And so what I think I'd like to see as we prepare to come into the budget season, and we're going to be talking about it, is I'd like to see something that says, what would it look like if we reduced the class sizes to, let's say, 26, 27, all the way around, across the board? And then from there, what does that, what does that staffing look like? So if we're going, let's say we do a blanket, a blanket reduction. And I say this because in every other field that I'm in, in every other circle that I'm in, we talk about how we can't go back to the pre-pandemic status because it wasn't healthy for us as Black people. And because it wasn't healthy for us to go, you know what I'm saying? It wasn't healthy for us then, as Black people in pre-pandemic. It got worse for us during the pandemic. So now that we're starting to see changes, why go back to pre-pandemic? And I've been hearing a lot of, a lot of the talk has been around where we're getting our classroom sizes back to pre-pandemic class sizes, which is why I'm making that statement. So instead of getting our classes back to pre-clan, pre-pandemic class sizes, what would it look like if we said, because we understand that students learn better in smaller class sizes, that we want to, across the board, minimize our class size from, our maximum class size from 34 to 26, or 24, or something like that? And then from a financial perspective, how much does that actually cost us, right? So if we reduce it across the board, flatline it across the board, how much money does that cost us? Do the schools have the infrastructure to support that? Support that move, meaning that we've got enough room to have four or three, or whatever the classes may end up being? But do we have the infrastructure to support that? And then, before we start looking at cutting our teachers, if we reduce the class sizes, could we give our students a better experience by spreading those teachers out? And I'm thinking about George specifically. I'm, I'm not going to lie. I'm not going to lie. I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about schools like George where it's, it's tough. It's tough. And somebody asked out there, "Have you been at George to do the walkie?" Yes, I have. Yes, I have. They, they, they know me by name at, at George. And so, and, and so, and I'm, I'm bringing that up because if we had, across the board, I know that it would be tough. I don't even know that it would be easy, and I'm not smart enough to figure that out for myself. That's why I'm talking to the experts, and I didn't want to blindside anybody. So I want everybody here to know that I called and I talked to the staff earlier to let them know that I was going to ask this question tonight because I didn't want anybody to feel as though, "Oh, Pastor Herman, get up there and he, he, why didn't you tell me this? And you should have let me know." I don't do that. That is not how I function. But that does not mean that I don't want the answer, right? And so I believe that there's a way. That's what I would like to see in the work session.
So why don't we explore the potentiality there? And, you know, it would help me also to know what that looks like on the ground. I don't have a good sense of what that looks like, what the costs and benefits are.
Chair DePass, can I add something, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I always seem to follow Director Green and his eloquent speaking, but it's tough, but I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying. I want to take it a step further. One of our public commenters was saying, like, "Part of our vision is to center students." So I want to see in our budget proposal, I know me and a lot of other students, we see these numbers. We don't see what that is like in the classroom for the students. I want to be able, or for you guys, to paint a picture of what this funding will look like for students. I want to see the class sizes, what the supports are for students, direct supports, speech pathologists, counselors, social workers. And specifically, I know a lot of elementary school teachers have been reaching about, out about the cuts in arts and PE. So I would also like to see how this is affecting our students directly.
Thank you, Student Representative Weinberg. I'm going to move us forward in the interest of time. Thank you for that rich discussion and for your creative thinking. Appreciate that. We're going to move now to the student representative. We're going to move now to the student representatives' report. Student Representative Weinberg, are you ready to share your report?
Yes, I am. Thank you for all the public commenters tonight, especially the students. I believe this is probably the largest turnout of students we've seen at any public board meeting that I've been at in the past three years. I especially appreciate the age range of students we are seeing because a lot of times the advocacy we see are from high schoolers, so I appreciate the amount of elementary school and middle school students who are here testifying, or even in the crowd. Thank you for being interested in this enormous body who makes a lot of decisions about your education.
Yep, thank you.
I don't have much to report on today since we did meet seven days ago, but I am excited to announce that at the next board meeting in two weeks, we'll have a new student rep elected, and I'll be able to introduce them to you all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jackson. Let's go ahead and move on to Board Committee and Conference Reports, and we'll go ahead and just go quickly through these if we can. Audit Committee, any updates? All right. Charter and Alternative Programs, any updates?
I meet tomorrow.
Great. Intergovernmental, Director Lowry?
We met two weeks ago and had a really great conversation about our relationship with Houseless Camps, and we also talked with Safe Roads to Schools and got some information about that program and ways that we can expand that. Our staff is working on a grant to make it that all schools have access to the Safe Roads to Schools program. Right now, we see disproportionate access, given the fact that most of those are parent-run activities, and so the city is partnering with PPS to increase that. And then, like I said, we had a great conversation with our safety team about Houseless Camps, and we have a great new staff member who came to us from the city of Portland that is helping us as we begin to think about ways to keep our students safe and be good neighbors. So that was our meeting.
Great. Thank you. Nothing's been going on in the Policy Committee, I don't think Director Brem Edwards, right?
Yeah. We've got two items later on, after two years, bringing the climate policy to the committee. I did have a, it's not on your list, but I do have a report from the Harriet Tubman Middle School and the Rose Quarter that the legislature put $120 million into a bill for rebuild of Harriet Tubman. And we have a lot of people to thank for that, our allies, both in the community, and also Governor Brown, legislative leadership, and lots of work by PPS staff. So it still has got two more votes to go, but we appear to be on our way to having the state rectify a historic wrong, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. Facilities and Operations, Director Hollins?
No report.
Okay. The Elections Task Force, that's mine. We did meet, well, so we had a discussion last week. The Elections Task Force met yesterday. Just to go over a little bit more of the refinements to the maps based on some of the council, or board discussion from last week, and we talked again about a path forward. And really, since we didn't hear a lot of interest in the board from making significant changes immediately in terms of moving away from the current zone elections, we are going to be looking just at what do we need to do legally around reapportionment, based on the census. The Task Force will be coming back to the board with a recommendation in a few weeks, maybe a couple months, around that sort of options A and B, and then we'll have a more full board discussion about that, so we can move that forward quickly. And then the Task Force is also going to be putting all those other issues, continuing to look at zone elections, looking at campaign finance, looking at who gets to vote in our elections, on sort of a medium and long-term path. So we'll be sketching that out as well. So more to come on that. And then the last one, I guess, well, Southeast Guiding Coalition will be getting an update in a future meeting, so I think that is it. And Chair to pass, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So are we at?
You just finished those, so first reading?
First reading, so Elections Task Force, policy?
So.
First reading of the policy. So Director Brem Edwards, would you like to introduce the proposed policy?
Yes. So this is a policy that, sorry about that. So this is a policy that is a revision of an existing policy. Actually, the board rewrote this policy a couple years ago, following the Whitehurst misconduct report, and we made a number of changes. One of the things that we left in it, after a discussion with the superintendent, that we still had the school board approving any international travel, and also approving any travel more than 150 miles from Portland. And the revision that we are bringing to the board tonight, that for our first reading, would essentially revise the provision in the policy about who approves and removing the board approval and replacing it with a staff-level approval. So it's a relatively minor change. I will say that there also was a discussion in the committee that while there was, there has been conversation by board members about us getting, you know, approving individual field trips, and sometimes the timing being off, and what issues that causes for school communities and communities that are traveling. But the one value that we did see of looking at over the past several years of the field trips is looking at potentially inequities across our schools of what school communities had the opportunities to travel, and the cost for students, how it was being paid for.
Yes.
So in the committee discussion, we talked about an interest, even though we're removing, we would be proposing to remove the board approval, that we're very interested in taking a larger look at how travel, and we all know as parents how important those experiences outside of the classroom can be, and so wanting to really look into, so what do our students have access to in the equity? So that's just a separate piece of work from the Policy Committee, but I guess, since you're on the Policy Committee, just something for leadership that we're interested in looking at.
Well, I've been sitting here for two and a half years, and one of the first things that I recognized that struck me was who was going, who was traveling and where they were traveling to. I just, it struck me like a ton of bricks when I noticed the trips that we were approving, you know, to Europe, or, you know, places far and away, and who was getting to participate in those experiences.
Great. Well, the beauty of being.
We do have students going to China, for instance.
Chair, is that you can put that on the agenda, but I think that's a discussion that.
Consider it done.
That board members would welcome. But in the meantime, what we have tonight is the first reading of the revisions to Policy 6.50, 0.010. This proposed policy change will be posted on the board website. Public comment period is a minimum of 21 days. Contact information, public comment, will be posted with the policy, and assuming that we don't have any major revisions, either in the committee or based on public comment, the board would have a second reading or approval of these policy revisions on, at the April 5, 2022 board meeting.
Great. Thank you. We'll now consider the second reading of the Climate Crisis Response Policy, Climate Justice and Sustainable Practices Policy. Director Brem Edwards, will you please introduce the Climate Crisis Response, Climate Justice and Sustainable Practices Policy before I ask for a motion? And I want to mention that there, we tried to start a student video, but I think someone smarter than I in tech has figured out how we can have the sound. It's about a two-minute, two-and-a-half-minute video. I think that we're, we can play it now.
So we're going to play the video, and then I'm going to introduce the policy, or?
Yes. I'd like to play the video because it's a student voice, it's student, I guess, I don't know the students, they're starring in it.
They're from Roosevelt.
They are from Roosevelt High School, but I guess I wasn't clear on their role, if they directed and did the art direction for it, if they're just starring in it, so.
They worked with the climate teacher who helped them put this together, and it's an audio about what they want to see from a student perspective around climate change and the role they want us to play in.
Yes. I think it'd be great to show it and to lead off this discussion.
And to kick off her thing, what a kicker.
It's a great, it's a great way to kick off.
That's what I like.
It's also student voice, which is important to us.
What'd she say?
It'll take a minute. It's okay, we're.
Move it up into the thing.
Breathing.
So this is the moment for everybody to take a water break.
I know, but after two years, I'm like, ready to go.
Stretch.
Anticipation.
You need to have needles up here or something.
There you go.
I feel like we should lower the lights.
We just decarbonized the presentation.
We heard about food waste prevention, waste prevention, education, warming climate around fishing and fisheries, energy in buildings, and recycling. And we didn't hear that I saw anything about transportation, but that's a big carbon footprint also. So, thank you. We'll go ahead and you'll introduce the second reading.
Yeah, I love it. I'm thinking, like, in the future that we should kick off all of our major policies with student voice. So it was a great way to kick it off, and actually, this introduction tonight is going to be bookended by student voice, because we're going to start with the Roosevelt students, and we're going to end with student voice of Jackson, our board student rep, and Danny Cage, our district student council rep on the Policy Committee. So hopefully, we'll get the full infusion of student voice. So yesterday, United Nations report, written by 270 researchers from 67 countries, was released, and it painted a grim picture of our future as time is running out to fix the earth's climate. To avert the most catastrophic effects, the report said that urgent action is needed to reduce greenhouse gas, carbon, and methane emissions. Tonight, we at PPS have an opportunity to both lay down a marker for our response to the climate crisis facing our planet and our school community, and to clearly commit to what actions we will take as the largest school district in the state. PPS has a significant operational carbon footprint between our buildings and our bus and vehicle fleet. We have more than 80 school buildings, an average age, which have an average age of about 80 years. Most are energy efficient and ready for dramatic climate or weather changes. We have more than 50,000 students and staff getting to and from school daily, mostly in school buses or single occupancy vehicles that have significant climate impacts, and we're also a significant purchaser of goods and materials. Tonight, we have before us for final consideration, the Climate Crisis Response, Climate Justice, and Sustainable Businesses Practices Policy. This policy was created, debated, shaped, and molded over the last two years. It started as the idea of the Climate Justice Committee, a group of students, PPS staff, and community members who worked with the EcoSchool Network to draft a policy for the PPS school board's consideration. It was bold and comprehensive, and informed by the voices of our youth climate leaders and our commitment to racial equity, knowing that the impacts of climate disruption harm students of color and their families the most. The policy set, the policy set 2050 as the net zero carbon goal, and outlined three pillars with strong climate goals underneath each pillar. Over the last year, as is the case with most policy discussions, there were questions and debates about costs, what's possible, staff capacity, priorities, the role of frontline communities, the lack of technology and innovation to achieve our goals, and who would hold PPS accountable. It would be the natural course in these committee discussions to compromise, set lower goals, uncover reasons why something couldn't happen or shouldn't happen, point to budget and cost issues, or set this aside because there are many other priorities and challenges facing us. But that didn't happen. Actually, quite the opposite. It was so heartening, because yes, there was a natural tension between what we needed to do and what staff, board, and community had in terms of operational concerns about funding and capabilities to actually do the work, and whether there was available technology to evolve our infrastructure and our vehicle fleet. At one point, it looked like while we had a common vision of the future, there was an agreement on the policy path and the milestones to get there. As a Policy Committee Chair, I asked staff and partners in the work to think about what was absolutely essential for us to be successful in response to our climate challenges. Advocates, staff, and committee members brought open minds, a willingness to work together, and through the technical obstacles, and a commitment to our common vision. The result is this policy, a policy that's bolder, more focused on frontline communities, more informed by youth climate leaders, and our racial equity commitment, and in some cases, more aggressive than it had been a year ago, including moving our net zero greenhouse gas emissions target from 2050 to 2040. Highlights of the Policy Committee's draft include: PPS committing to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and reach net zero emissions by 2040; a requirement that PPS design and construct new low-carbon schools and prohibits fossil fuel infrastructures in new buildings, and phases it out in current buildings; a commitment by PPS to take steps to ensure staff and students learn about and engage in climate solutions, climate resiliencies, and climate justice practices; a requirement that PPS transition its vehicle fleet and contracted vehicle fleet to electric or low emission or renewable fuels; it directs PPS to establish school-based infrastructure and supports staff and students to walk, bike, bus, or telecommute to reduce single occupancy car commuting; and it commits PPS to supporting frontline student communities to build resilience from climate change induces stressed. This will be a sustainable and durable policy framework because it was built by the community. This could not have been possible without the Climate Justice Committee, the EcoSchool Network, and key community leaders who stayed at the table to work through the technical and operational obstacles. Mike Rosen, Amy Higgs, and Jane Comalt, they stayed at the table for more than two years to work through technical and operational issues. PPS students, I'm so glad to see you here tonight because you inspired us, you kept the pressure on, and demonstrated. the pressure on, and demonstrated why PPS' future is in good hands, as the students are committed passionate leaders who won't accept lip service or platitudes and instead demand a real response. So, thank you. Sunrise PDx and youth climate leaders walked out, marched, held sit-ins, and demanded action. They were the catalyst for the climate action and will hold PPS and us all accountable. I'm going to ask two of our, as I mentioned, two of our student leaders who participated in the policy development, join in the introduction tonight. And I also want to give a shout out to all the adult climate leaders who helped craft this policy and supported students as they found their voice as climate leaders in our community. With a special shout out to the Roosevelt, we've had so many great videos and communications from the Roosevelt community and from Roosevelt teachers. It's also important to recognize the people who sat at the table, the current policy committee members, Directors de Pas, Green, Lowry, and also our student rep on the committee, Danny Cage, and Jackson Weinberg as well. In addition, because this spans more than one board, I want to recognize Rita Moore and Scott Bailey, two other board members, and student rep Nathaniel Shu, because all those people collectively and along with the community sat through two years of meetings, grinding through both big issues but also the specific nuances of each section. It also wouldn't have been possible without the deep engagement and partnership with PPS staff. They played a critical role in getting to yes around the implementation, which is going to be really challenging. Let's make no mistake about it. So I want to just share my appreciation for the consistent thoughtful leadership and partnership of Liz Large and Aaron Pressburg through 25 versions of the policy, as well as the support from Superintendent Guerrero, Dan Young, Mary Kane, Aurora Heimel, Tanya McKay, and Emily Kortnich. There also are a long list of climate organizations that provided technical expertise and support for us as we kind of wrestled with these various issues, and I want to thank all of them. So adoption of this bold and comprehensive policy framework with aggressive net zero carbon goals is both a challenge and an opportunity for our school district. But climate action is absolutely critical for our planet, our school community, and our schools. We're going to need to work together to meet these aggressive goals, and I expect our community to hold us accountable for measurable progress on climate action and climate justice. Our work isn't done after tonight. We need to move ahead with deliberate speed to name the Community-Based Climate Crisis Response Committee that's named in this committee that will monitor progress and hold PPS and its leaders accountable, both for the implementation and also meeting our climate response milestones. And so now, I want to ask Jackson, who participated in many of our discussions, to share your thoughts on the really important third pillar, which I didn't really discuss, but that's the one focused on the students, and then afterwards, ask Danny to speak to it as well.
Yes, thank you. I have been on the policy committee for three years, and two of those years was spent on the Climate Crisis Response Policy, plus all of the other normal policies we get through. So two-thirds of my time, essentially, meeting every other week for two hours this year and three hours last year, has been spent, a lot of it, on this. I can confidently say from this and the subcommittee meetings we held last year, that I've spent 50-plus hours working on this policy and communicating with students about it. And that's my 50 hours, not to include all of the student leaders, all of the other board members, all of the staff time that we have put into this policy. I'm not going to reiterate all of the names and groups that Director Brim Edwards named, but I appreciate you guys as well, and so does PPS for your work in this policy. I also wanted to expand on the testimony given by Ada today about how this is one step, and hopefully, the first step towards realizing this policy. We're going to need consistent measures and consistency along the board to implement this policy and continue to push for climate justice in our schools. Part of that is including budgeting for next year and every successive year, we need to be focusing on the climate crisis, and also depending on the voters to pass all of the successive bonds so we can rebuild all of our schools, who Julia, Director Brim Edwards referred to earlier, are over 80 years old on average. Also, appointing the nine-person committee, they need to start immediately, and we need to get started on identifying students and teachers and community leaders to serve on that. And lastly, I'm really looking forward to the administrative directive that will be developed over the next months, maybe even a year, to really figure out how PPS plans to implement this policy. And lastly, the final pillar. It would have been easy for PPS to just say, "We're going to be net zero by 2040," but not only did we say we want all of our schools, all of our students, all of our community members to be safe in the future, but we also said we wanted to continue to educate our students on the climate crisis and engage them in climate solutions. This policy and its three pillars will be a role model for the rest of the Oregon schools, and hopefully, a nationwide example of how to be successful in addressing the climate crisis. Thank you. I'll pass it on to Danny Cage now.
Thank you. Hey, Danny.
Thank you, Student Representative Weinberg, for your work and your words on this as well. I would also like to thank every student who spoke before me in support of the climate policy. To every student that spoke, I want to remind you that you are the reason that we are doing this policy, and you are also the drivers for accountability on this policy. Without further ado, good evening, Directors, Superintendent Guerrero, and community members. I'm beyond honored to be introducing this policy here today. I want to start by reiterating the appreciation for all of our amazing community partners, district staff, teachers, students, climate-based organizations, and many others who helped shape this policy. As a student, I am excited that we are finally at the stage that we are right now with this policy. Years ago, students led walkouts across the country to call for direct action on climate change here in Portland. Students went above and beyond with sit-ins, walkouts, marches, testifying before this very board, and much more to promote a message to our elected officials, both local and federal, to listen to our plea and be leaders amongst the climate crisis. I should note, I was one of those students who called on PPS and other government agencies to step up and be leaders. Now I stand before you to be introducing this policy that we took to the streets through walkouts years ago. This policy is big, and this policy is bold. I believe that PPS is the trendsetter for school districts across the state, and tonight I can say that statement with confidence. We have been the leading school district in Oregon in regards to climate policy, and now we will be the leading school district in climate justice and climate education as well. This policy tackles presenting solutions and learning-based options, lowering our net zero target goals, teaching students to understand that climate change is a byproduct of oppressive systems such as capitalism, colonialism, white supremacy, and so much more, to community engagement. But we are not done yet. One climate policy does not necessarily make us climate leaders, but it's a good place to start. It will take holding the district accountable to this policy and holding ourselves accountable to the values of our students. But tonight, we have taken the first step in truly committing to longevity of our students. Upon this passage of this policy, PPS will be a leading example of how a school district can be a climate leader. Thank you for being brave, and thank you for being bold. I will now read the first parts of the preamble to this policy that was crafted by Representative Weinberg and Chief of Staff Jonathan Garcia and myself. "In response to human-caused climate crisis currently underway and the direct harm being done to our district, society, and the planet, Portland Public Schools is committing to the immediate mobilization resources for climate action. To this end, the district commits to reducing greenhouse gases emissions and minimizing other negative environmental impacts, improving our schools' communities' health and wellness, and building a culture of learning and responsibility and sustainability centered on our values of racial equity and climate justice. Climate change disproportionately impacts the vulnerable communities, members of our communities, and we will prioritize serving people with disabilities and communities of color and other vulnerable populations. The district aims to educate and empower students as leaders in the transition to a sustainable city and a restorative society. Our goal is that all students to be environmentally literate and to understand the connections between their daily actions and the natural world by using climate-based learning civic action as a context for meeting academic goals described in a graduate portrait. The district will prioritize investments that achieve the greatest emissions reduction while integrating climate action into our curriculum and developing a culture of environmental stewardship and climate justice through organization. Other efforts, which have been on the lower impact of emissions, will require major changes in infrastructure and will be implemented over the long term." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, both. I should just note that this came out of committee after several years and many, many meetings with a unanimous recommendation from the committee members, and I really thank the committee members for diving into the big issues and the Oxford commas, that was Director Lowry, because we have the policy because everybody contributed greatly to it. So with that, I offer it up to the board for its final consideration. Happy to answer any questions people might have remaining.
Sure. So, thank you, everybody that you listed for the work on this policy. I know it's been two years. I've only been involved for the last year. PPS as a system has the largest potential in the buildings and transportation areas, which are responsible for the bulk of the carbon emissions that we emit as a district. And so buildings, we know new buildings, we're aiming for net zero. Old buildings, we can adapt, not quite as efficiently, though. The electrification of the fleet, reducing also the miles traveled with parents crisscrossing because they're not going to their neighborhood schools, should be something we should consider down the line. I also want to note that higher-income people in our community, and this is not just in Portland, typically have larger carbon footprints, but they also have the means to offset those carbon footprints. And so, it's a pay-to-play system that favors higher-income people when actually, lower-income people and people of color suffer the greatest impacts globally from climate change. I say nothing about us without us, and I mean that with the opportunities we have in education and curriculum, that we have an opportunity to not just develop engineers and mathematicians and scientists, but also we have great opportunity with the career technical education in developing a pipeline, a green workforce, that can help mitigate the climate change right here in our communities. We had many people die from the heat wave, vulnerable populations right here in Portland, and we have an opportunity now, as a community, to put cooling units in the apartments of those people that are the most vulnerable. And so, the career technical piece is not lost on me. I'm sorry to go on and on. I'm very passionate about this myself. So I want to know if we have, do we have any other board discussion?
Do you want a motion?
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6463, Resolution to Climate Crisis Response, Climate Justice, and Sustainable Practices Policy?
I'm going to move it. Thank you for the courtesy, Director Green.
I was watching for that one. Director Brim Edwards moves, and Hollands and Constam get to share. We're not excluding anybody. Is there any board discussion?
I'm anxious to move along and hear the public testimony, but I just want to say one thing that's especially gratifying to me about this process over the last two years is the, first of all, the student leadership, which is, that is absolutely what planted the seed of urgency on this policy. And so, thank you. Thank you for bringing everybody together. Thank you for taking to the streets. Hi. Thank you for just all the thoughtful engagement on the hard work of crafting the language and figuring out, okay, if these are our goals, how are we going to really walk the talk? Because that's the hard part, really crafting the policy. So thank you, first and foremost, to our student leaders, but also just the incredible amount of engagement from the community. I have heard from so many people in the last week, students that I know, students who have graduated who are aware that we're voting on this and have reached out to me about it, all sorts of friends who work in the environmental community, who, you know, I had sent the policy to and it provided thoughtful engagement, and have been talking with their colleagues and looking at examples around the country. I mean, this is one of the fairly rare examples where we really have engaged the broad community in our work, and there's no question in my mind that our work is better for it. So this means a lot to me tonight, and move it on.
Thank you. Is there any further board discussion? Is there any public comment? I see your hand raised. I don't know if you're on the list, but I'm willing to hear you out if you allow the people that have signed up prior to go first. I'll recognize you when that's, yeah, thank you too.
We have Mike Rosen.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah. School Board Policy Chair Brim Edwards, Directors and Superintendent Guerrero. I'm Mike Rosen, R-O-S-E-N. I represent the PPS Climate Justice Committee. We are a group of teachers, students, parents, scientists, and community activists, and I'm here to express our strong support for the PPS Climate Crisis Response, Climate Justice, and Sustainable Practices Policy. This policy has been over two years in the making and is a true collaboration among the members of the CJC, the ECO School Network, PPS technical staff, and the Board's Policy Committee. It reflects the interests and values of our whole community to protect current and future generations from the ravages of climate change. To say the least, the policy also reflects the district's intent to take responsibility to step up to the challenge of reducing its carbon footprint to zero by 2040. This is not a token effort of solidarity. PPS is one of the city's biggest property owners, operates one of the biggest kitchens, and largest bus fleets in the city, and as such, is one of Portland's biggest sources of CO2. According to our research, we believe this to be one of the most comprehensive and boldest, if not the boldest, school district climate action policies in the nation. Highlights of the policy include prioritizing students and frontline community members in decision-making, enhanced commitment to climate justice education, providing robust accountability and transparency through the creation of the Climate Crisis Response Committee. The completion of the policy and its release to public comment is a huge achievement. However, the work is just beginning. It will be very important that PPS staff deliver an administrative directive quickly and then begin implementation, as 2040 is an aggressive timeline. It will also be a high priority for the district to formulate and activate a robust Climate Crisis Response Committee. In addition to prioritizing its membership towards the frontline community, its members should include the advocates who have the technical expertise, wrote, and stewarded this policy on its more than two-year journey. It is important to acknowledge the relentless work of Director Brim Edwards, who artfully guided this policy to the public comment process for the last six months. As the chair, she led the work with internal and external stakeholders who had diverse and sometimes divergent views through a collaborative drafting process that resulted in a bold, student-centered climate policy. This was no small task. Her efforts are most appreciated. In addition to the CJC and the ECO School Network, I would like to thank the many other organizations and jurisdictions that have supported this work, including the Coalition of Communities of Color, Sierra Club, Oregon Environmental Council, Sunrise Movement, 350 PDx, Families for Climate, Climate Solutions, Breach Collective, Cascadia Wildlands, Electrify Corvallis, Green Energy Institute, City of Portland, and Multnomah County. And finally, we're especially grateful to the many concerned students who made their voices heard and for whom this policy will directly benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rita Moore?
Hello.
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 It's weird being on this end.
You said you were gonna come back, and you did.
Oh, you did.
Good evening. My name is Rita Moore, M-O-O-R-E. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the Climate Crisis Response Policy. Just yesterday, the UN's Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change issued a report that laid out in stark detail the future that awaits us if we collectively fail to act. The report says, quote, "Transformational changes are needed to safeguard human well-being," unquote. That means every institution and system, public and private, must urgently understand its contribution to climate change and reimagine its practices. I'm proud that PPS is embracing its responsibility and publicly committing to ambitious transformational climate goals, including continuing its deliberate shift away from fossil, all fossil fuels. While the district has been engaged in some of this work for a number of years, this policy provides a strategic framework to guide decision-making and actionable goals to which the district can be held accountable. The problem with climate change is that its worst effects will be in the future, even as our daily activities determine that future. Unfortunately, humans are not built to think long-term, and in the crush of daily life, the future is usually an afterthought. So it's important to articulate bold policies to focus the mind and impel behavior change. To my knowledge, no other school district in the country has committed to such a comprehensive and meaningful set of climate actions. I hope that PPS's commitment to transforming its practices, both educational and operational, toward a sustainability grounded in principles of equity and climate justice can serve as a model for other districts and governments to do likewise. As the state's largest school district, one of its largest employers, and one of the largest property owners in Portland, consistent intentional action by PPS can contribute significantly to achieving the ambitious climate goals adopted by the city and the state. But ultimately, lofty goals and soaring rhetoric will not avert the catastrophe laid out in the IPCC report. Only bold leadership will. Accordingly, I urge PPS to join with many others in strongly advocating that the I-5 expansion be canceled. Proposed, proposed state funds to relocate Harriet Tubman Middle School seem appropriate reparations for a past bad act. Its meeting should not be undermined by doubling down on that original injustice, much less in the midst of an existential climate crisis. Finally, I'm proud of the way this policy was developed. The original proposal for this policy emanated from students, teachers, and the community. Students have for many years now been at the forefront of demanding climate justice in PPS, pushing us all to act with the urgency this crisis demands. Can I just, the educational changes outlined in this policy will empower our graduates to fulfill our vision, able to cooperate, solve problems, and lead for a more socially, socially just global climate. Over the last 18 months, board members worked with students, community members, and our exceptional staff to craft a policy that will provide a coherent and enduring strategic framework for genuinely meaningful climate action. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have worked on this groundbreaking policy and strongly urge the board to adopt it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'd known that former board member and policy chair Moore was gonna be here, I would have added her to the Oxford comma, comment. But really, thank you for your contribution to this policy, Rita. We have Scott Bailey.
And we have another former board member.
Old home week.
Thank you.
Yeah. It is a little weird to be back. I was really upset that somebody was in my parking space, that my ID pass wouldn't let me in the back door. Chair DePass, Vice Chair Scott. I always loved it when somebody actually added the vice chair thing when I was. Director Student Rep Weinberg, Superintendent, and the inimitable Liz Large, and most especially, Ms. Bradshaw. Yeah, 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 okay. Thanks for inviting me to here to testify tonight. This is a great moment to pass this policy, which took a lot of work. I want to reiterate the thanks to Central Office staff. You already named them all. Erin Arora, Dan, Emily, Tanya, Mary, Liz, and I hope I didn't forget anybody. It was easy to work with them on this policy because they are already doing a lot of it, and that's something that kind of gets lost of, oh, we have a new policy, so we'll start on it. Our staff has been doing that for years, and so they helped shape the policy that's gonna take us forward in, I think, the most effective way possible, given our resources. They rock. I also want to thank the many teachers, some still active, some retired. I'm gonna throw a couple of names out, but I got to know a bunch of them sitting on meetings last year, and just total respect there. Jan Zuckerman, who was here earlier, Bill Bigelow, Eric Huh, Al Barca, Troy O'Beal, Rachel Haynes, Tim Swineheart, and many, many others. They've been the ones creating curriculum for years and doing amazing things in the classroom, as well as advocating for change. And third, the students, way too many to name. I didn't, I haven't met Danny. But Jackson, of course. Anyway, lots of students over the years doing great things. Thank you. This policy has many key points, including the goal of net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2040, focusing our limited resources where they will have the maximum impact on emissions, and prohibiting new and phasing out existing fossil fuel infrastructure and equipment. My neighbor, Michael Hall, who is a leader in the movement to ban gas-powered leak blowers, is very happy with the language in the policy. And those two-stroke engines kick out a lot of emissions. And a crucial point, the policy calls on PPS to collaborate with students and frontline communities in holding us all accountable and moving forward. I also want to agree with Board Director Moore about the I-5 expansion. You know, please, come out against it. It's just the wrong direction and a huge waste of money. And finally, can we please get Nicole replaced to work on curriculum? So, anyway, that's all for tonight. It's great to see everybody. Weird to be here on the other side. Keep up the good work. Thanks.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, former Director Bailey.
That concludes who has signed up for public comment.
Thank you. And then I'd like to recognize Mr. Chu. We'll give you the same courtesy as everyone else. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. It's interesting, you know, seeing Rita Moore, Scott Bailey, Mike Rosen in here, because they were the board when Harriet Tubman reopened back in four years ago. I'm frustrated, and I express it, and once again, it's coming from a place of love, but I gotta say this, and this is what drives me completely mad. You're sitting here talking about this climate justice and racial equity, and once again, I'm glad that Rita said about the I-5 and the relocation of Tubman. I mean, the policy is great, and shout out to Danny Cage, Ada Crandall, and Jackson, and the folks that were behind that. That's, that's good. But policy is one thing, you know, there's this thing about practice, and any teacher knows that that's where it comes down to, practice, like what you do in the class. We could talk all day, but it's what you do in the classroom that makes the difference, right? So my thing is that there's this philosophy, there's, like philosophically, you're talking about this climate justice thing and racial equity, right? And at the same time, ODOT's sitting here telling us that this freeway's gonna get expanded, and that we gotta relocate Harriet Tubman Middle School. And right there, that's me, it seems like a paradox, right? It's a conflict of interest. You can't pass policy and at the same time, once, you know, you know, allow ODOT to expand the freeway, if you believe in climate justice, and then to move Harriet Tubman Middle School, which is an issue of racial equity, white supremacy and racism, and extending gentrification in 2022. So I think that this district, for a long time, there's been a big gap between us in the classrooms and y'all up there. The thing is, if we actually come together and actually y'all listen to what we're saying, like, once again, we're frustrated, right? Because we're not heard, right? We have better things to do than come to war being and yell at y'all, but if that's what it takes, then I'll do it. But the thing is, right, that's where, that's a crazy making right there, right? So you can, you pass this policy, but your actions don't match up. And then when we ask questions, we're shut down or placed under investigation, right? So, so my thing is like, if y'all wanna move forward, right, then once again, you gotta include the people that are on the ground, right, that know what's going down. And so like, I don't think that's been the thing, but once again, it could turn that way. If not, it's gonna happen regardless of whether with you or not. So that's, that's what I'm saying. But once again, shout out to the youth that are actually speaking up. And once again, Rita Moore and Scott Bailey talking about that I-5, they are on point, and I would take their words for it, if you don't have to take mine.
Thank you so much. I just want to make a note that, you know, that we have a system that I don't agree with the system all the time, many of the times I don't, but I wanted to recognize you specifically because of that wanting to bridge this gap between us and them. And I wanted to hear your thoughts, and I'm really glad that you showed up and shared your thoughts with us. Thank you.
You too.
We can clap, we can clap for Mr. Chu. Thank you. So, sorry. It is time to vote. The board will now vote on Resolution 6463, the Resolution to Adopt the Climate Crisis Response, Climate Justice and Sustainable Practices Policy. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Enthusiastic yeses. All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. And then are there any abstentions? Resolution 6463 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative voting.
Yes.
Yes. We can clap for that one, too. I mean, it's, it's Mardi Gras, and we passed the climate policy. Like, it feels like a really good special night tonight. Okay, before we adjourn, we pulled, yes.
Chair. I just want to make sure that, for the record, I also express my appreciation to our student leaders for their persistence, their tenacity, their advocacy. I think the byproduct, the result of all of that effort, is a very bold policy. We look forward to operationalizing the next steps to make this all true and execute on this policy. So thank you to our student leaders.
Thank you so much for your comments. Yeah, we're doing, this is the, it's your future. We're talking about that report that came out on Monday was really dire, so happy to put that, happy to celebrate that tonight. Thank you. Before we adjourn, we had one item that was pulled from the consent agenda, and I believe it was Resolution 6452. Did you want to, did you, we're gonna just, is, there's board discussion about that? That's the resolution to authorize off-campus activities, and there were a list of three activities, I believe.
Yes, thank you for that. So I just had a couple of questions around this authorization for off-campus activity pieces. So when I see on here, like estimated cost, is that the cost that PPS is paying, or is that the cost our students are paying? Because when I looked through some of the work, it looked like it was our students was paying, and then on some of them, PPS paid part of it, but then on some of them, they did not. So I just wanted to know the reasoning behind that.
What's the true cost of the, what is, what is that? Is, it's, there's a thousand dollars, and is that per student? Is that the question?
Well, no, it has an estimated cost on here, but when you look in each one, there's a cost that the district pays, and then there's a cost that student pays. So I just wanted to know, one, if, why we don't pay the whole cost for the student? Two, how come some schools get some assistance from PPS and some schools don't?
That is an excellent question.
That is a fair question. I'm gonna have our regional superintendent for secondary schools, Margaret Calvert, come up. It's a good observation, Director Hollins, because there is a lot of variability in the types of trips, who bears the cost, sometimes how much the district is supporting, but I'll let Margaret speak more to it.
I'm gonna check. Are we good? Okay. Good evening, Board of Directors. Thank you for the question, Director Hollins. There are a couple of things that we are, this, for this current school year, we're just coming back into field trips and out-of-state travel and overnight travel. So appreciate the question. There are a couple of things that happen with field trips as we go through. Depending on whether the trip is required and is connected to a specific educational experience is one piece, as to whether it's on the field trip form, like some of the form, the actual language in there about whether or not it's a required trip or if it's a voluntary trip. What you're seeing, I believe, are trips that are associated with athletics and/or a competition that is out-of-state for an extracurricular team, I believe, for tonight. So part of what ends up happening, if it's athletic teams, for example, they often will plan for a trip, sometimes years in advance, honestly, and work through fundraising and whatnot that then helps support the, the travel. If it is, the, if it's an athletic team, what that looks like as far as like the district part of the contribution and whatnot on the form itself, it would depend. I, like, I think we have to look at what the details are of each specific trip. Sometimes what ends up happening is that the per student cost is identified, but it may be covered by fundraising. So, and what that looks like, it'll depend. So I think it's, it's hard to say what the specifics are, but they do vary depending on what the trips are. But if it's, and you're seeing the overnight ones. So it looks slightly different, like for the state tournament or various other pieces like that. Depends on what the trip is. So I know that these particular ones are for, like, spring, I think one of them's a spring break trip. Director Hollins? Yeah.
So, okay, so what I'm hearing is there's like, there's not a process for determining which stuff we pay for, which stuff we do pay for, because when I looked on here, they're all athletic-related.
Say it again.
When I looked on here, they're all athletic-related, whether it's tennis or robotics, right? And so I'm just trying to, trying to understand, like, how come we allocate funds for one group and not allocate funds for another group? If we're talking about equity, like, for instance, and I'm not picking on anyone, but Lincoln has getting some money from the district, or Ida B. Wells is not.
So I think it's, there are two different questions on there. One is, it's a question of interpretation of how people fill out the form is one piece, and I, so I'd have to go back and look at what that is. So it could be, for example...
I see on one, the one for Lincoln, it just says compete on a national level, and that's it. But then when I see, look at the other one, it talks about more academic things that it's gonna happen during this trip, and they get nothing. So I'm just, that's just not, you know, adding up to me.
For the, I think, I think the question is, when the, when, athletics is a big one, right? So like...
So let me make it easier. My question is, what contemplate a school getting some financial assistance from the district versus schools that don't get financial assistance?
So I think it's a question, it's not exactly that direct, I guess, because if I'm a, like, so I was a high school basketball coach, right? So I spent time, and we would do, there'd be trips that we would plan over winter break, perhaps, right? So we, as a team, would fundraise for that, right? So that is, so that is a contribution of the team. Whether or not that, I fill out the form, and it said that that was coming from the district or coming from the team is part of, is part of your question. I don't know the, I'd have to go back and ask that question of the coaches about what, how that shows up on that form, right? Because it says, what's the per pupil contribution or cost is one of the questions on there. Because it says, what's the per pupil contribution or cost is one of the questions on there? And so I, I'm happy to go back and ask, but I would say the vast majority of teams that travel fundraise specifically for that travel.
So, okay.
Director Hollins?
Go ahead.
I think what you're getting at is the same question that's arising for me, hearing you.
Yep.
And, and I think we have some homework to do to really sort of speak factually around, let's look at the record over the last few years about who goes where and who's paying for that.
Yep.
Because I think what we all want to see is equitable opportunities for students to have out-of-school or field trip experiences, you know, available to them as well. And maybe in some of those cases, we need to set aside some subsidies to be able to enable those experiences. But it would be good to survey, sort of, what does that look like over time and probably pre-pandemic?
The last couple of years is probably a little sparse.
Right. But what I think we want isn't even experience, not who has fundraising capability or what high school let you go to. Like, how do we make sure all of our students perhaps have that experience as well? So it's a good question to investigate, but I appreciate you bringing up the topic.
I'm also wondering if, much like, much like, um, we had the purchasing department add a column to indicate whether it's a minority woman in business, I'm wondering if, um, Director Hollins, something like, so there's a clear pathway, so we know what's fundraised, what the student has to come up with, what the district's paying. And then, and that trend data, I think, would be really helpful, too. I'd love to see that as well.
I just know that when Roosevelt's girls' basketball team went, it listed that the district was, um, that they were paying X amount of money per student. And in fact, what happened is the district, I say the district because I'm part of the district now, so I'm, I am the problem.
You have the lapel pin on and everything.
All that, all that. So I, I don't exclude myself. But as a district, we said, if it's going to cost you $30,000 to get there and you raised 29, you're not going. And yet those games, yet those games got included in their listing of the number of games that as a, as a league, they were going to be playing. So what we were told is, if you don't raise enough money to get there, then you're not going, and we're not going to, uh, reschedule any future games for you to make up the games that you lost. So your record is going to be minimized by that much. So I, I guess that's where I'm trying to get to. Either, if we're giving, if we're giving any team some money, if we're giving any teams, any program, anybody, anywhere, black, white, whatever, if one school qualifies, then every school needs to qualify for, for funding. And I'm, that's what I want to see.
So I think that we can, I'm, I'm certainly happy to poll and look at the travel over the last, um, pre-pandemic and look at some of the, the pieces. I think the, it's, your point around equity and equity of access is, is well taken and who travels and for what purpose, I think. And I heard people speak to that earlier this evening about, um, how is that determined? And, and where, what are we seeing? So happy to, to help look at that and to bring some further information. I think that, um, the, uh, the spaces and, and, um, for, what does that look like and how is that distributed across schools and school communities, I think, is something that's worthy of attention. So happy to help with that.
I had a quick question. On the estimated cost, is that the total cost per student or is that the cost, out-of-pocket cost for students?
So I have, I don't have the form in front of me exactly. I don't have the exact form in front of me, but I'm happy, I'm happy to go, to look at it. It's something, in one place, the question is that what is the cost of the trip? A total, like a total dollar amount? Another place is it's a cost per student and another place it's how much are students responsible for?
Yeah, I actually don't have access to those documents on my board, but, but the cost on the resolution that is posted. So there's like $1,000 is the estimated cost. What is estimated cost referring to?
I believe, I, so I don't have access to.
That's the student's portion.
I think it's the per student.
It's the student's portion?
That's the student's portion.
I think it's the per student cost.
Okay. I'm going to move us along. I appreciate your willingness to help. And Director Hollins, um, did you have more questions or are you satisfied with the,
uh, I mean,
with, are you satisfied with?
Faction, but, so do we have a, do, do, uh, do they have a budget that they use for helping schools for trips?
Who's they?
Do we?
Athletic or individual?
Do, do the district? Do we have a budget?
Not that I'm aware of.
So where does money come from that the district gave?
It, it,
No, it did. They gave, they gave 600 and some bucks. Where'd that money come from?
It, it depends on the, on the situation. I have, like, on the specific one in front of you, I'd have to look. I'm not sure.
Some is athletics, some is the individual school. We could get some clarification from Marshall Haskins and,
If it's, it, it, yes, it'll depend. So if there's a specific question, we can go back and look. So I think that if there, do schools have discretionary, like, there, every school has a budget that you can contribute things to, that most of the school's budget goes to copy machines and paper, honestly, but, um, although a little less now because people are using less paper, but.
Because we passed our climate action policy.
That's right.
We're printing on both sides.
But it, it, it depends on the specificity of it, you know, of, of, of the specific situation. And what are the, like, what is the context? So it, it's, it's a tough one. There's not a specific space that is happening. It's not something that's, that is probably applied very, um, consistently, right, in that realm? But it is, it'll be relative to what are the, um, what's happening. So I know that as a principal at, at Jefferson, when we were, uh, traveling or if there were pieces that we were looking at, um, as far as anything from mock trial, um, uh, fees for application fees, right, or entry fees versus various other things, you know, like, I think that those were, those were pieces that would come to a principal for some decisions, um, as well as, um, just thinking about what are opportunities to help cover costs. So it's varied, because I think field trips are varied. But in this particular situation, I, I, I think that it's, that there is an entrance fee, but I, I'd have to look and, I don't have the details enough to answer it.
But this is an area ripe for, uh, uh, you know, investigation and we can have, do that somewhat when we're looking at the policy. Because the other issue is not just how much is being fundraised, how much is being paid by families, how much is the district paying? The other issue is who has access to these opportunities? Because it's pretty hit or miss now, just based on, you know, an enthusiastic, resourceful teacher who decides, or coach who decides that they want to provide this experience for their kids, so they figure out how to make it happen and they fundraise in the community. But everybody doesn't have that coach or have that teacher. So it, it is.
I think it, it might make a,
Director Constan?
It might, it might make a very nice audit topic, actually, Director Hollins, because that, that way we get exactly, we're, we're getting exactly the questions answered about where the money's coming from.
Good evening, directors. Good evening, directors. Jonathan Garcia, Chief of Staff here. Uh, so just got off the phone with our Senior Director of Athletics. And to, to be clear, when athletic event, uh, trips, field trips happen, uh, schools, athletic teams fundraise. So we have booster clubs, we have student body accounts. So that's the primary driver of how we get our, uh, how, uh, field trips are, are, are underdone. If there are, if there are needs, if there are, is there, if, if they've raised 90% or 95% of the, of the money, our athletic team, as you know, the PIL Foundation and a number of other initiatives run by athletics team, uh, really would offset any, 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 uh, needed money to, to, to finish the travel. So, uh, so, uh, senior, our Senior Director of Athletics really works with, with the schools, the high schools and the specific teams for these, these individualized tournaments or trips outside of, of their area.
That is absolutely not true. Because he, the, if we're talking about the same people, if we're talking about the same people, and I don't like to name blast, but I think Marshall Haskins and Diallo, um, are the ones. And I, if you say it to me today, it's got to be true tomorrow. And I was told specifically that if it costs $30,000 and you raised 29 and can't come up with the other thousand, you're not going. So maybe, maybe it was a joke. Maybe it was a joke. Because at the time, I was like, it's cool, I'm not even worried about it. I got the, I got the 20 right now that I can drop on it. She's not worried about the district coming up with the money. We'll get the money because we've never asked you for anything. But the fact that you, you said that to me, you know what I'm saying? So I, I'm just putting that out there because I don't want us to, I, I don't know, it's not true. And so,
Well, your, 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 your experience may have not been true. So I think it's important for us to, to take this information, this conversation. I don't think it's going to be fruitful for us to, to engage in this without all the key players. So it's important to have our, our Senior Director of Athletics,
Absolutely.
here so that we can understand specifically how funding works for these types of events, field trips.
Absolutely.
And I guess the other piece I would just say is that, that, uh, travel shows up in a variety of ways and athletics is one, right? So I think even for what you're looking at tonight, there's,
Robotics.
There's, there's a variety of opportunities. I think how, how, I think, anyway, I think we've agreed to pulling some information and looking at the distribution and what does that look like in equity of access and, and, and students having, um, not only access, but actually being able to, uh, participate in some of these activities. So happy to do that.
Yeah. And I, you brought up a PIL Foundation. What is that?
Sure. It's a, and, and Director Brim Edwards, I believe, is the treasurer of the foundation. So maybe you could speak a little bit to, to it. But it's a nonprofit organization that supports PIL athletics in their organization.
So is that through PPS or is that an outside organization?
I'm happy to share. It was started by a number of parents. I'm not a, I'm, I'm a co-founder, but not, no longer an officer. And it was started originally to raise funds. It was back when there were no middle school sports or there were only middle school sports for basically school communities that could afford it. And so it really was designed to raise money to provide equitable athletic opportunities. And it has a, like, volunteer, it's a 501(c)(3), it's 3(c), 501(c)(3). It has a Board of Directors and, um, every year they do a couple fundraising projects. And I'm trying to think, right before the pandemic, they funded the career, um, the college coordinator to help students who might not get help, um, being able to get, um, scholarships, um, sort of like D3 scholarships, um, and to be able to play, um, sports, um, in college. So they've done a variety of different things.
So that's a, so that's a non-PPS entity?
It's a non-PPS, yeah. It doesn't.
So, so that's a non-PPS entity, so that's not something we would be looking to get funds in to help equalize out the funds? Or that's just one of the places that we look?
You could ask. I mean, if PPS has asked, but I know of, PPS has never asked.
I'm kind of confused because I think I, when I'm looking at it now, when you talk about the funding, I think I seen it on the PPS website. So is it a PPS thing or not?
Yeah, the PIL Foundation?
Yeah.
The PIL Foundation is a nonprofit, uh, independent nonprofit, uh, that, uh, supports, works on behalf of and in support of, uh, PIL athletics for PPS.
So that is a funding source that we could use to?
So I think,
Can I just, I think some important questions have been asked tonight, but is there something we're driving to tonight with this conversation? Because I hear staff is going to, staff is going to gather some information, come back, we're going to keep talking about it.
Yeah, but this thing has been, this thing has been for a while. So, so them not having the questions right now is not an excuse for not to ask the questions because they don't have the answers now.
It just felt like we'd gone down some rabbit holes here.
Well, we, it is, and equity is a rabbit hole. It's been a rabbit hole for, for decades. And, and it's going to continue to be a rabbit hole until we continue to look at it and, and address it head-on.
But I'm not disagreeing with your desire to, to, no, I mean, I'm not, I think we need to address it. I, I think all of us are in agreement to address it. I'm actually asking, what are we driving towards tonight?
So, once again, we're having conversations. I would like some answers as far as what kind of budget that we have for, for travel or whatever we use for funds to help those teams out. That, that would be one. I would like to see what that budget is because we have funds that I've noticed.
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm right, that the question is around athletics. Is that right? Or is it broader?
Funding for trips.
Say it again.
Funding for trips.
Experiential.
Funding for, for trips.
Yeah, whether it's athletics and whether it's robotics.
Yeah, so, so, uh,
College trips.
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to make sure that, that you, uh, that the board understands the scope of that, that work. Uh, there are independent nonprofits that specifically work to fundraise, to send our students out to Japan and other, uh, nations every year through our dual-language immersion program. So there is a lot of active fundraising. As you know, Chair Brim Edwards, uh, on the policy committee, is looking at fundraising across the district because it is, you know, when, when you have schools that can raise 15, $20,000 to send their kids to, uh, a week-long experience at Japan and some students don't have access. So how do we have that conversation in a way that doesn't limit the resource or the access to any student, but actually lifts up the opportunity for every kid to have access to these type of opportunities?
All right, so let's, let's do this. So let's narrow it to athletics for right now, and then as we get into the broader picture, we can get into that. Let's narrow to athletics for right now.
I think, um, in the interest of time, well, it sounds like we have a request in, um, to follow the fundraising stream, to get a better understanding of the field trips and the money and the different fundraising nonprofits. And, um, it sounds like we have a promise of staff to follow up with us. I'd be interested in that.
Sure to pass. I want to be clear, though. What I heard was, uh, we're going to get information on, uh, athletic event, or athletic field trips, uh, funded by PPS. Not, we're not going to go into the other endeavors.
Um, is there a reason why we wouldn't look at, um, like the travel to Japan and China, the robotics and some of those other experiences? Or is that, I mean, I'm, I'm asking you as staff, is that?
Sure. I think we're, well, I think two things. One, we're having really, uh, good conversations at the, at the policy committee, uh, with Chair Brim Edwards, and I look forward to having those discussions there. Uh, and secondly, if I'm, uh, transparent, I mean, we're in two months, three months into, uh, before, uh, budget proposals and we have a number of things. This will, this will carve out three or four FT, uh, uh, staff members dedicated to do a, a deep analysis, which is, if that's the pleasure of the board, we're willing to, to take, take that on.
Thank you. Um, so I'm now going to move. Do we have a motion?
Well, I think that was a question, actually. Like, do we want to prioritize this request that we're making in this time in the budget process to do this deep dive into athletics? I mean, I think there's probably a middle ground where we can just get a spreadsheet of the requests that have come to the board in, you know, let's call it 20, you know, 18 school year, 2019 school year, and this year. Take a look at it, where are they coming from, who is paying? It'll give us a sense of things and then we can discuss whether it's in the policy committee or elsewhere, how do we want to address equity of access here? Um, also, I think we can probably get a lot more clarifying information from Mr. Haskins, um, once he knows that we have had this conversation while he is watching hoops.
And, Director Hollins, yes, I, um, so I heard that Director Hollins would like to limit it to, just to athletics. I'd like to see the whole, and if, if that information isn't available in the spreadsheet, I think that would be great, but it sounds like we would like to be walked through so we have an understanding and get that trend line starting. And I think 2018 is great because that's, it's 22 years before the pandemic. We could have a sense of the trends before, before the pandemic hit.
So 2018, 2019 school year is what I heard, and then this current school year. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and Director Hollins, am I correct about that? 2018, 19?
Yeah, well, we looked at, and like I said, I would like to see what kind of budget we have for that as well.
Say it again, say it again.
The budget for that.
So I, I do think that there are some trips that are time sensitive.[1682.24] So, I, I do think that there are some trips that are time-sensitive.
Oh, we're approving.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we actually have.
We're not going to approve them, I just, I just have some questions I wanted to bring up.
We have not voted, and, and, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
To adopt Resolution six, four, five, two. Did I hear, um, Green?
I, I motioned.
Okay, Green and Hollins. We had some baseball coaches shaking in there, please.
Oh, and we should have said that from the beginning, it's, it's a yes.
Yes, I don't want to forget. Okay. I have a motion, Director Green, a second from Director Hollins, to authorize off-campus activities. Um, I think we're ready to vote. Is there any board discussion? I think, I think Director Scott.
We didn't have enough?
I think Director Scott is packing his bags right now.
We didn't have enough?
Nobody else want to go home? Nine oh five, nobody else want to? All right.
Hey, I would just say, listening to this conversation from Idaho, um, I think it's really important that we, I think, Director Hollins, what you said about equity work and going down rabbit hole holes, and this is really important, and I think we have to balance that with the staff time on the budget and the equity work there, so I think the compromise we've reached is a really good one, to get information from staff, but to do it in a scope that's, um, reasonable while we're doing all this other important work.
Absolutely.
Okay, I believe that we're ready to vote on Reso, to adopt Resolution six, four, five, two, the resolution to authorize off-campus activities, that's in front of us tonight. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no, or indicate by saying no. A student representative Weinberg?
Yes.
So, Resolution six, four, five, two passes by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative voting yes, and we have one more item of business. I, I do see Director Scott.
So, I'm just asking.
Packing up in the side, you can, you can go, you can pack.